Senate will come to order. Messages from the House?
From the House of Representatives, message number 104, Joint Conference Committee Report adopted. Mr. President, the House adopted the Joint Conference Committee Number One report on the bill listed above by the vote indicated. House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates, Prohibition and Remedies II. By a vote of 40 I, 17 no, and three excused. Signed, Wendy Harding, House Chief Clerk.
Senator Hicks, if you're ready, on Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, referencing House Bill 1002. I have it read in. Go ahead, Senator.
Mr. President, your conference committee is looking through this as this track in, and we think there may be an omission in the conference report. So what I would ask until we get clarification on that, that we stand at ease, if we could, until we get further clarification on that conference committee report. We think there's an omission as it was printed out, and so we want to double-check that. Mr. President.
All right, we'll stand at ease for just a moment. Double-check for accuracy and full printing. Thanks. Senator Hicks?
Mr. President, I am ready to present the, let me see, let me find it. Joint Conference Committee Report, House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates, Prohibitions and Remedies II. Mr. President.
Committee Report Number One. All right, Senator. Yeah, I'm just getting to that reading. Clerk, please read the Joint Conference Committee Report.
Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, referencing House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates, Prohibition and Remedies II. Signed by Representatives Summers, Greer, and Swannitzer, signing for the House, signing for the Senate, Senators Hicks, Ellis, and Kinsky.
Senator, do you want to move it?
Mr. President, I would move Joint Conference Committee Report Message Number 105 to House Bill 1001, or 002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates, Prohibitions and Remedies II. Ask for your favorable consideration as I walk you through this. So if you go to the handout you have on the Joint Conference Report, the Senate receded and adopted the Senate amendment. No, we adopted the Senate amendment. Well, the first one we adopted was House Amendment Number Two, yeah, Second Reading Amendment Number One of the Houses. We adopted Second Reading Amendment Number Three of the Houses. And then we further went down, and we deleted the Senate Amendment Number One and further amended it. And then I'll walk you through what this does now, Mr. President. So if you'll take your bill and you'll go to page seven. So the first thing is, is we adopted the Senate position on page one through six, which was the finding and the resolution. So the House adopted all that. So here's where we come back on page seven. We adopted the House position, which excludes from the definition of public entity, any entity receiving federal funding, that by complying with subsection B of this section will lose that federal funding. So we reverted and we've adopted the House position. Subsection B, we adopted the House's subsection B, which provides no public entity shall enforce any mandate or standard of the federal government, emergency, temporary, or permanent, that requires an employer to ensure or mandate that an employee receives a COVID-19 vaccine. We further adopted subsection C, to the extent that subsection B conflicts with federal law, regulation, rule standards, subsection B won't be enforced, that the federal mandate takes effect. However, this brings in a subsection D, if the federal mandate which conflicts with subsection B is stayed by a federal court, or is repealed or withdrawn, or otherwise not in legal force or effect, then subsection B of the plan is in effect. So this effectively says that as long as there's a federal mandate in place, that governs. If there is a stay put on by the courts, our state law would then govern. That's the effect of that. Mr. President, as we go down to Section Three, this brings in part of the House amendment, and then we further amended it to include, so romanet I is existing language out of the House version, and then we go over and we bring in romanet II. This was, we've changed the verbiage that was actually in the Senate, but it does the same thing. It says joining a lawsuit initiated by a Wyoming resident who was personally injured or has livelihood is negatively affected by a federal vaccine mandate pursuant to 91603. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, on Section Four, we moved from the Senate position of $10 million and the House position of $250,000 to an appropriation of $4 million to the Attorney General's office. Mr. President, that's what the conference committee does. I would ask for your favorable consideration of an I vote.
Thank you. And for the record, we are in Joint Conference Committee Report Number One on House Bill 1002. You have been asked to vote I. Discussion or questions? Senator Hutchings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On my conference report, I go from page five at the bottom of page one, and then on page two, I start up with page eight, line seven. I'm missing page seven, and I wanted if the bringer of the conference committee report would go over page seven, line eight through 12 one more time. And like I say, I'm missing that on my report.
Okay, let's collect a few here. Senator Case?
Mr. President, my guess is, and I wasn't part of this conference committee, but that there are no changes from what we sent out of here to those lines on page six or page seven. So this conference committee report would just deal with the changes that were made to the bill as it left our body.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Hutchings, does that answer your question?
Mr. Chair, part of it does, but he did spend, or excuse me, the bringer did spend some time on page seven, and I just wanted him to reiterate what he went over, especially on lines eight through 12.
Thank you. Senator Ellis can probably help with that. Senator Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. President. To clarify, lines eight through 12 on page seven remained unchanged.
Thank you. Answer. Further discussion or questions? Further discussion or questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead. Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, on the, just a quick question about the new language at the very end. I think it's the, I think it must have been further amended and adopted. So this would be on the language, which would be on page eight after line 19. So we have the litigation of this section to include, and you've got it changed to joining a lawsuit initiated by Wyoming residents who are personally injured or whose livelihood is negatively affected by federal vaccine mandates pursuant to 91603A4. And I'm wondering if you could help us understand that. I think if we look at that, we're going to find out that that's, that kind of already exists. But one of the questions I have is, one, I just like some clarification of what the effect of that is. That, I don't know if that's a, puts us in the same place where the bill was before, or if that's a new thing. And I also wondered if there was any discussion about this, and the fact that in some of these instances, it may very well be, in some of these, because of this bill, say Wyoming might be suing itself, and other individuals may be aggrieved by that, such as patients at the state hospital, the Wyoming Life Resource Center, or other people like that, which would put us in a position where the Attorney General is assisting them in suing the state. And so I'm just wondering if there's any talk about that, or if they can shed any light on that, to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator Perkins, any members of the committee on that? Go ahead. Senator Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the concern arose over romanet II, which, as we adopted in the Senate, said that the Attorney General may initiate a lawsuit on behalf of the state of Wyoming, and may allow Wyoming citizens to join the lawsuit as affected classes of those persons injured. And so in a sense, I think the concern was that we were creating a class action lawsuit, and that somehow the Wyoming Attorney General's office would be representing an entity, private citizens, that we're not, that aren't the state of Wyoming. The Attorney General's powers are limited to only representing Wyoming. So if you think of romanet I and II, right now, these are powers that already exist for the Attorney General to initiate a lawsuit, which is covered in romanet I. And so we thought, rather than having the Attorney General improperly represent citizens, which it can't, that if a private citizen or group will bring a suit regarding any mandate, that they could join that lawsuit likely as an intervenor. The Attorney General's office does, the bringer of the question correctly notes, they have this authority now. But I think that by clarifying, and this is a permissive area, where we say they may, you know, we can't direct the governor and the Attorney General's office to do anything, but it's a permissive, and hopefully will nudge and encourage them, if a lawsuit's appropriate for them to get involved in as an intervenor, that they would lend their weight to those cases. And just as an aside, you know, Wyoming does this in a number of lawsuits. There are instances where, you know, certain groups sue the Bureau of Land Management, Wyoming intervenes and lends its weight to support some of those decisions. And then the opposite's true. So that's the intent of that language, is to not ask the Attorney General to represent individuals they can't. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Further discussion or questions? Joint Conference Committee Number One, House Bill 1002. Ready for the question? Question being called. The motion is that the Senate do adopt the Joint Conference Committee Number One Report, referencing House Bill 1002, and vote I. The chief clerk will please call the roll.
Roll call on the Joint Conference Committee Report. Anderson? Baldwin? I. Bateman? I. Boner? I. Bouchard? No. Case?
Okay, proceed.
Cooper? I. Driscoll?
Aye.
I. Ellis?
Aye.
I. French?
Aye.
Furphy?
Aye.
Guru? No. Hicks?
Aye.
I. Hutchings?
Aye.
James? No. Kinsky?
Aye.
I. Colt?
Aye.
I. Cost?
Aye.
I. Landon? I. McCune? No. Nethercot? No. Pappas? Excused. Perkins?
Aye.
I. Rothfuss? No. Salazar? I. Schuler? I. Scott, excused. Steinmetz? I. Wasserberger?
Aye.
I. Anderson? Excuse, Mr. President. Excused. President Doc Stetter? I. Closing vote? Closing. Vote closed. Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, 20 I, 7 no, 3 excused.
By your vote, you have adopted the Joint Conference Committee Report Number One, referencing House Bill 102. Folks, we'll just stand at ease for a moment while we send our report down to the House. Stand at ease till the sound of the gamble.
Okay folks, this is what we're gonna do. We gotta get this enrolled back taken care of, both sides of the building down the governor and then we're gonna close it out Senate day. So just little more patience here.
Thank you for joining us today. We will be getting started in about 90 seconds.
Senate will come to order. Vice President Hicks.
Could I have privilege of the floor, please?
Please do.
Mr. President, I'll try to make this brief. I handed out something as we've gone through this last two weeks together. The highs and the lows and I've thought and I've heard the criticisms that we haven't got anything done or we didn't do anything or we didn't accomplish anything. And this came to mind, Mr. President, and I just wanted to share because I think it is the most poignant thing that could possibly be said at this point in time, folks. You showed up and you got an arena and you deserve a kudo for that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You need to clean out your desk entirely because they go through and clean them out. Don't leave anything in them, okay? Thank you. Signing of enrolled acts. We are at that order of business signing of enrolled acts. House Enrolled Act Number One. Reading quick, please. Read it in.
House Enrolled Act Number One being original House Bill 1002, an act relating to the protection of individual rights.
I'm about to sign House Enrolled Act Number One, the same being House Bill 1002. Vice President Hicks, let's close things out. Oh, excuse me. Hold it. I'm reminded we have one message to read in. Just hold on.
House of Representatives, message number last, November 3, 2021. Mr. President, this is to inform you that the House of Representatives has completed its business and is ready to adjourn. Suspending with further reading, Wendy Harding, House Chief Clerk.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Vice President, let's close it out.
Mr. President, I move that bill's currently pending before this body of the 66 Wyoming State Legislature, October through November 2021 special session not be carried over for any future legislative sessions.
Minority floor leader Ranthus.
Mr. President, I second the motion of the Vice President.
You've heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Mr. President, I move that the House of Representatives be informed that the Senate of the 66 Wyoming State Legislature, October 9 and November 2020 special session has completed its business and is ready to adjourn until a date certain that's called jointly by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House.
You've heard the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is adopted. I am directing Senate Chief Clerk Ellen Thompson to inform the House of Representatives that the Senate, October-November 2021 special session of the 66 Wyoming State Legislature is ready to adjourn. Vice President Hicks.
Mr. President, I move that the Governor be informed that the Senate has completed its business and is ready to adjourn.
You've heard the motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion is adopted. I'm directing Senate Chief Clerk Ellen Thompson to inform the Governor that the Senate of the 66 Wyoming State Legislature special session is ready to adjourn. Governor has provided a closing message to the legislature that I will ask the Chief Clerk to read now.
November 3, 2021, addressed to the Honorable Dan Doxstetter, Senate President, the Honorable Eric Barlow, Speaker of the House. Dear President Doxstetter, Speaker Barlow, and members of the 66th Legislature, thank you for your diligence in looking for ways the state of Wyoming might counter improper federal intrusion into the affairs of our citizens, businesses, and state. If anything, your work over the past several days has shown why so many in Congress seem to have forgotten that there is more to legislating than simply sounding off. Your comprehensive debate shed light on the complicated issue of states' rights and highlighted some particular challenges we face when addressing policies around this pandemic. I think we have all learned a lot during this special session. As Governor, I remain steadfast in my commitment to use every tool, especially litigation, to oppose the control the federal government is attempting to exert over our citizens and businesses. I also continue to work tirelessly to protect every person in Wyoming and their constitutionally enumerated rights. You can be assured I will not rest in this endeavor. Safe travels home. We still have a lot of difficult but important work to do before February's budget session. Sincerely, Mark Gordon, Governor.
Thank you, Chief Clerk Thompson. Mr. Vice President, do you have a motion?
Mr. President, I move the following. One, that the Senate of the 66 Wyoming Legislature be adjourned from the special session until a date and time which are determined jointly by the President of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, Representatives for the purpose of calling the Senate and the House back into section. Two, Mr. President, that in no such time that in no such time as established before December 31, 2021, the Senate, the 66 Wyoming State Legislature special session is adjourned, sign of die effective at 12:00 noon on the date that the legislative budget session of the 66th Legislature shall convene on the 14th of February 2022 at the hour of 10:00 a.m. Three, Mr. President, that the Senate specifically concurs in any identical motions adopted by the House of Representatives. Four, that the House of Representative fails to concur on the action of the Senate under paragraphs 1 through 3 of this motion by adopting an identical motion applicable to the House of Representatives. The Senate of the 66th State Legislature special session is adjourned, sign of die.
You have heard the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. By your vote, the motion has passed the Senate. We are now at that order of business, reading an approval of the Journal. Senator Coleman. Could I have you say that on the record again? Please, go ahead.
Repeat. Mr. President, your Journal Committee reports that the Journal of November 3, 2021, has been read and recommends that it be approved.
Thank you, Senator Coleman. There being no objection, the report is adopted. Subject to the conditions set forth in Vice President Hicks' motion, the Senate 66th Wyoming State Legislature special session is adjourned. I would invite Senator Boner to give the closing prayer.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, there's no shortage of reminders of the need for humility in this job, the view of this building, the paces looking down, as from folks who have come and gone before. So, in that spirit, I offer this prayer called the "Let Me Have Humility." So, let's pray. Dear Lord, we ask that you deliver us from the desire of being esteemed, from the desire of being loved, from the desire of being exalted, from the desire of being honored, from the desire of being praised, from the desire of being preferred to others, from the desire of being consulted, from the desire of being approved, from the desire of being humiliated, or the fear of being humiliated, from the fear of being despised, from the fear of suffering rebukes, from the fear of being forgotten, from the fear of being ridiculed, from the fear of being wronged, and from the fear of being suspected. Lord, I also ask that you grant me the grace to desire that others may be loved more than I, that others may be esteemed more than I, that in the opinion of the world, others may increase, I may decrease, that others may be chosen and I set aside, that others may be praised and I go unnoticed, that others may be preferred to me in everything, and that others may become holier than I, provide that I may become as holy as I should. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Senator Boner. The Senate is adjourned on this November 3, 2021.